Welcome to tonight's meeting. I'm going to try my hand at presiding over this for you this evening. Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Chair Fleming, Vice Chair Milliken.
Here.
Treasurer Davis.
Here.
Secretary DeGardy.
Here.
Trustee Hatcher.
Here.
Trustee Landau.
Trustee McKnight-Martin.
We've got an agenda in front of us. Do I hear a motion to approve our agenda?
So who?
Support, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The agenda is adopted. Thank you. We've got Tab A approval of the minutes. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of our July 30 monthly meeting as submitted. Motion?
So who?
Support. There is motion and support. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Minutes stand approved. Citizen participation. Mr. Fitzpatrick, do you have remarks for us?
I do, Trustee Milliken. Thank you.
Step forward. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to welcome everyone back for a new school year. I trust we all had a good summer. I only have one thing I want to say tonight, and I understand that the Board is going to make recognition of this later tonight, but I think it appropriate that I say something. Looking through the Board packet, I see that we have six, I don't know if I counted that right, yes, six longtime faculty members who are retiring. Some of them are good friends. All of them valuable faculty members. And if my addition is correct, between the six of them, they account for 159 years of experience here at WCC. That's experience that frankly can't be replaced, and we will miss them all. They've been great faculty members, each of them with different talents and different agendas and different, well, all of them different disciplines. We will miss them. And as I say, I know that some mention will be made of them tonight, but I want to commend Noonie Anderson, Mike Gallia, Tom Hemstager, Gene Miller, Hank Townsend, and Colette Young for their services to this college. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for recognizing them. Are there any public comments? Anybody in the House tonight who has anything else to bring before the Board? Special reports. Vice President Hearns.
Good evening. We've had our STEM Scholars come before us in the past, and tonight we just want to provide a quick update from Susan Dentel, who's the lead faculty of that program. Some of the students in the STEM Scholars Program were a part of the University of Michigan's Undergraduate Research Opportunity Program, and she just wanted them to share some of the things that they learned and did this summer. It's a very prestigious national program, and it's not an easy program to get in, so it does speak very well to the program that we have here at the college, that so many of our students over so many years are included in that program.
I would like to introduce Michael Cook. This is Kayla Winter. And this is Arava Gayan. And all three of our STEM Scholars participated in the, actually, it's a community college UROF experience. And they worked with a research mentor, and they each had some varying experiences in different areas. And I just want to say special mention that Arava won two ribbons in this two awards in UROF. So, Michael, do you want to mention your project?
I work at the Hospital of Miami, I work in a cancer research lab at the Cleveland Cancer Center. Specifically, I analyze single-cell RNA sequencing data and investigate ways to make that process better. And I just wanted to say real quick, just a quick point, that no other resource on this, in the college, has come closer to what the STEM Scholars Program has offered me. I honestly don't think I would have had this opportunity if it weren't for Susan or her hard work and the incredible amounts of support and resources that the program has put together. And I just can't wait to hear what you've got to say.
Thank you.
I worked in Dr. Talia Norris' lab. She was a postdoc at New York City, Michigan. She was investigating whole state medical tree, specifically in arterial patterns, including different species. She investigated in coding videos for her and analyzing behaviors presented in those videos. It was a great opportunity for me to get a better sense of what research is actually like, personally, and a better sense of whether or not it would be right for me. And I'd really like to thank Susan, STEM Scholars Program as a whole, and David, who was my mentor in the STEM Scholars Program, for helping me get that.
I worked in the neuroscience department, and my mentor was looking at Alzheimer's disease. Specifically, her project was looking at how the MLI beta flag that we see in Alzheimer's disease patients, how it affects the blood vessels and the vasculature of humans. And we were using this with the IDEXAD mouse model. And I had a lot of fun this summer, and I just want to say thank you to you all for supporting the STEM program, and thank you to Susan for supporting us.
Thank you. Any comments? We applaud you for your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
And they're going to sneak out because they have class and teaching, so.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Bye-bye.
You have more for us, Vice President Hearns?
I have more for us. So I'm not going to twist it around, but I do, I would like to introduce our new faculty members. So I'm going to introduce them individually, and then I'm going to ask them to stand behind me as I call their name if they're here. There's a couple of them who are actually teaching tonight, and so they didn't make it to the meeting tonight. Rocky Roberts, one of our new classified faculty in automotive services. Kevin Lindsay in criminal justice. Alan Coleman in machine tool and CNC. He's in our advanced manufacturing department. Kevin Woodland, who's in graphic design. James David Clitner, who's in our audio tech program. Megan Bongo in philosophy. Ladana Kavanis in our medical billing and coding program. And we also invited Ann Herbert, who started with us in January. She's in our physical therapist assistant program. Kimberly La Forge is a new classified faculty member in surgical technology and sterile processing. Rhonda Johns is temporary, is full-time faculty in our medical assisting program. And then we also have Erin Anderson in English. And so we want to welcome them to campus and to our meeting. We started our new faculty class a little bit before school started. We've been meeting every other Friday, and we'll be meeting once a month next semester. And we're glad to have such a great new addition to our faculty this year. Thank you, guys. I have two other very important people I would like to introduce. We were glad to welcome to campus this fall two experienced community college administrators, Dr. Victor Vega and Dr. Scott Britton, our new deans. One of the things I was really excited about welcoming them both to campus is that they were both very excited about being in the Ann Arbor area. Dr. Vega was excited to be back in the Midwest. His background is in math, and he comes to us directly from Glenville State College in West Virginia, where he was the provost. Dr. Scott Britton was the dean at Milwaukee Area Technical College. Both have a big passion for student success. They've done a lot of work in that area, and they've already hit the ground running. So we're very excited to have them both on campus with us.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. And I'd like to introduce our new Vice President, Mika McCaskill. Mika's a Michigander. She's from, she has two degrees from Central Michigan University. And prior to coming to Washnaw, she was the Vice President of Marketing and Enrollment Management at City University of Seattle. And she's also been at Washington State University Tri-Cities. She has a lot of experience in recruitment and admissions, and we are excited to have her on campus.
We welcome you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Union Training Partnerships. Vice President Mueller. Who would like to come forward? Thank you.
I'd like to introduce to you tonight the person who's going to make the presentation to you, and that's Dr. Marilyn Donham. Marilyn's been doing this for a number of years as the Dean of Skilled Trades Training. And Marilyn, why don't you come forward and start the program?
Hi. Good evening. Do you know how I shrink this? This right here, you have a great. Thank you. There we go. Sorry. Thank you. So tonight I'm going to talk to you about some of the programs that we provide in the summer for building trade unions. The United Association of Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, the Operative Plasters and Cement Masons International Association, and new this year, the United Union of Roofers, Waterproofers, and Allied Workers. This year, the UA Summer Program was more successful than ever. We had 213 students, 3,000-plus guests on campus, 120 courses, 256 classes, which means we used every classroom on campus, the parking structure, the car barn, and part of the warehouse for our classes. We had 174 program graduates and 204 associate degree students. So this was the 30th year that the UA has come to WCC's campus. And our estimate is, in that time, more than 80,000 UA members have taken classes here at the college. And the estimate is that we have over 500 associate degree graduates as well. I'm going to show you a brief movie.
What's changed is how we're keeping track of the arc. Now, with computer monitoring, it's actually looking at that arc 20,000 times per second.
This is Core 1628, the basically college and school performance testing. As the equipment becomes more advanced and more training is required, UA technicians are going to be better suited to work on the more complex projects.
It's been a learning experience. The teachers up here are top notch.
I just want to thank you ladies for attending the UA Women's Recruitment Roundtable.
Each year we have a trade fair where all the middle elementary schools come down.
Well, this thing does, it gives you one procedure from roof to cap. The unique part of it is it has this oscillation. It goes back and forth 16 times a second.
This week, they have 17 people timed out for this class. Hopefully, all 17 will pass. A lot of plants now ask that you have this certification, even step foot on their properties. And everything has to be perfect, or you're not qualified.
The instructor really makes it kind of fun, and at the end of the day, you're like, wow, I kind of need to know that.
This is the fourth time this class has been held on a week-long venue here at the UA.
This is a robotic home station plus, this is cutting-edge technology.
Looks like 150 inches.
It's great to meet everybody from all around the country to share ideas.
Today is accumulation of years of hard work, dedication and learning. It is my challenge, your challenge, to engage the next generation.
I've never seen anything like this on Miss Sky.
You are the front lines. You are this organization's foundation. Your work is the backbone.
Another high point of the summer was when the United Union of Roofers, Waterproofers, and Allied Workers signed a five-year contract to hold their instructor training program here at the college. Executive leadership from their union came to the college on August 16 to meet with Dr. Blanca and members of our executive team. Keith Vikovich, the Director of Training, said Washnaw Community College has built an international reputation for excellence in building trade union instructor training programs. When it came to selecting a partner, we knew it had to be WCC. These programs have many moving parts, and we couldn't be successful without the support of our community organizations. First and foremost is Destination Ann Arbor. They provide such wraparound services for our unions that we wouldn't be successful without them. Mary Kerr is about to say a few words. Mary?
Welcome, Mary.
It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you so much. And actually, you know, it's, again, it's a pleasure, and I thank you for giving me a couple of minutes to talk a little bit about or highlight the value of Washnaw Community Colleges and what they bring to the community, and specifically, how the college has successfully collaborated with Destination Ann Arbor. Tourism is a significant economic driver for Washnaw County, bringing about 3.7 million visitors here every year and generating an excess of $1 billion in economic impact to our community. It is Destination Ann Arbor's objective to ensure the continued success of the area's hospitality industry by inspiring leisure travel and attracting group business to the area. As we strive to achieve our mission, we are incredibly, incredibly fortunate to have amazing partnerships within the community, specifically, more than 30 years of collaboration with Washnaw Community College. A vital element of that partnership with Washnaw Community College includes the college's hosting now for nationally renowned union instructor training programs. The United Association, and Marilyn talked a little bit about this already, the UA, the ironworkers, the operative plasters and cement masons, and now the roofers as well. Just a quick, a little bit of information about the economic impact of the United Association to the local community as well. The UA's economic impact to the community, and that's the total over the past 30 years, is $167 million, and that's net new spending in the community. Those are dollars that wouldn't be spent here if we didn't host the UA here at Washnaw Community College. And they spend their dollars, what do they spend their dollars on, obviously, here at the college, but in addition, in our hotels, our restaurants, our transportation carriers, retail, entertainment, and also recreation and more. And this is really important to all of us. These programs return to our community because they know they are appreciated and embraced for all the benefits they provide to our economy. They know that partnership with WCC fosters a climate which produces broad economic success for our community and ensures that their workforce is well-prepared for the future. Very quickly, you know, it's an honor to work alongside the Destination Ann Arbor team, the talented Destination Ann Arbor team, and with the support, not only of the college, but from our Board of Directors at Destination Ann Arbor as well. And our staff works with each, we have one person, that one account executive, that works with each of the unions. And that work, believe me, is year-round. And here to join me this evening is, first and foremost, one of our biggest supporters, Sean Duval, who is Chairman of the Board. Sean, thank you. Absolutely, he deserves a round of applause. Dennis Doyle. Dennis has been with us with the unions from the very beginning and attracting them here and helping to ensure their success. Dennis Doyle's our Executive Vice President of Marketing and Sales. Also joining us this evening is Kristi Poor, National Sales Account Executive. And Kristi works very closely with the United Association and ensures their success here every year. She's amazing. Not able to join us is Patty Ingelson. Patty asked me to make sure I told you that she's on a sales mission in Ohio, attracting more groups to our area, and she works with the ironworkers. And Doug Beenenfeld is not able to join us at this time. He may, he may be here. Oh, Doug, he's stuck here. Thank you. Doug Beenenfeld, who is, works with the operative plasters and cement masons, and now the roofers as well. So I thank them very much.
Could they stand so we could acknowledge them?
Please stand and let us, thank you. I appreciate. You know, let me take just a minute too to throw in something else besides the unions, but there will be more opportunity for greater collaboration now and in the future with workforce development. A new investment we're making in the community is through the WCC's Hospitality Scholarship Program, and our commitment to 12 WCC students each year for the next four years. And that was Destination Ann Arbor Board of Directors approved that. We're so pleased. We could not have done this without the support of the college and the foundation. The opportunities are endless, and we look forward to building on our history with WCC in the future. Thinking of the future, now in the future, I'd like to especially thank Dr. Blanca for her hard work and the dedication of her team to ensure the success annually of the union training programs, as they realize the importance of these groups not only to the college but to our community as well. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary, and thank you to all of Destination Ann Arbor's staff for your support. As Mary mentioned, another group that came this summer for the second time was the Operative Plasters and Cement Masons International Association. This was their second annual instructor training program, and we had increased attendance and expanded courses. We worked really closely with their leadership to develop this program, and we're lucky enough tonight to have international, I'm sorry, international representative Devon Johnson.
Thank you, Marilyn. It's a pleasure and an honor to be here this evening and have an opportunity to speak to you. I'd like to thank Dr. Blanca for the kind invitation to be here, as well as the Board for an opportunity to speak to you for just a minute or two, and also to Marilyn for her support and for her staff and their hospitality. Our International Training Fund is relatively new. It came to fruition about five years ago. We'd had various iterations of it over the years, and it was never very effective. Our organization finally decided to fund an international training fund at the level that it should be, and the first thing that we started doing was looking for an academic partnership with somebody who could help us with our instructor development program. I'm originally from Spokane, Washington, and all the way out to Spokane, Washington, I had heard of Washnaw Community College. And it's ironic that we finally ended up here, because before I came out to Maryland, I had heard of this organization here, and now we're finally here. We came basically on the recommendation of the UA. They've been here, as Marilyn said, for 30-some years, and that's what we wanted for our members and for our instructors. And our program, as I said, needed professional development training for our instructors, and that was something that Marilyn and her staff were very helpful in developing for us. They took some programs that had been used in the past, they refitted them for our members and our instructors, and it's been a great experience. We had, as Marilyn said, this is our, starting our third year. We had just under 100 participants the first year. We had just under 100 again this year. We anticipate having over 100 participants this coming third year. It's very critical to our organization to have this type of workforce development available to us. And I just wanted to thank the Board, Marilyn, and her entire staff have just been fantastic to work with. And one of the things I stressed with Marilyn early on was that we're not the UA. We don't have those kind of numbers. We don't have those kind of resources. But it was very heartening to know the way that we were treated and the effort and time that was put into our members and our instructors. And so Marilyn, we're very appreciative of that. Thank you very much. It's ironic that I would stand here and address this board, considering that I dropped out of high school about 37 years ago. And, but it was because of a community college in Spokane that I was able to get into an apprenticeship program. And that's kind of come full circle now, so I just hope you realize the importance of what you do here, not just from an academic standpoint, but from an opportunity standpoint. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Devon, for all the kind words. I want to thank all the WCC staff members and departments who helped to make this program a success in the background. Facilities, maintenance, financial services, conference services, shipping and receiving, public safety, grounds, custodial, human resources, payroll, and media services all have something to do with the success of this program. Like I said, it's a lot of moving parts. I'd like to thank my staff. Tony Esziziro is our technical director for the program, and I don't know if you know this or not, but we have a 10,000-square-foot warehouse at the back of campus that has millions of dollars' worth of equipment that we pull out every year for specific classes. Tony manages that, and he helps the instructors get what they need on time. And I would really like to thank Patrick Downey for all of the work that he does with conference services and these programs. Without, as you probably know, if the food isn't any good, nobody's happy. Right? And so he does an excellent job. He's amazing, and his whole staff, and fabulous foods as well. This year, Brandon Tucker took over the ironworkers, and he's going to say a few words about
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's my task tonight to give you an update on our ironworkers partnership, which, for me, effectively, we call them the ironworkers, but they're actually the International Association of Bridge, Structural, Ornamental, and Reinforcing Ironworkers. A little bit about the ironworkers, as most of us probably know, or if you don't, they began in the 1890s and have a national relationship with the National Union, the AFL-CIO. There's approximately 140,000 members nationally with 15,000 apprentices. There's approximately 140,000 members nationally with 15,000 apprentices, and we actually happen to, over the last three years, have started a pre-apprenticeship preparation program, because as they know, they're having aging workforce, and they're in constant need of apprentices, so we're trying to assist them with closing that gap by providing six foundational courses that allow for individuals to be prepared to test, and upon testing, successful completion allows for them to come in as second-year apprentices. This year marked their 35th year of putting on their training conference. Of course, we know 25 years they were in California, but for the last ten, they were here in Ann Arbor. And just a few pictures to show you, they come in and really take over the campus by providing really some of the state-of-the-art equipment that is available in the industry, from welders to other types of bridge-building machines. They really allow for a lot of individuals across the country to come to our campus and learn how to be able to bring that back to their locals. We had approximately 800 attendees this year, 650 took classes on campus, and when they come to campus, of course, they're learning the key skills that are necessary for them to go back and really train the next generation of ironworkers. In the short time that they're here, literally a week and a half, almost two weeks, they have nearly a $3 million impact to our local community. And one advantage that the college has afforded is that when they bring partners to campus, they oftentimes allow for our faculty and staff to engage with those partners. So, some partners that they brought this year, Milwaukee Tool, J O G Industries, Tybot, and United Rentals and United Academy, have really some of the state-of-the-art equipment that our faculty and even sometimes our students are able to see and engage with, and allow for us to be able to look at how we can implement that in our curriculum. One thing that you'll see in this picture is active engagement, so all over the campus, whether it's a classroom, a laboratory, or a parking lot, they really look at how they can provide hands-on training, and these are two examples of some that were doing that. Thank you.
So, will the Gordie Howe International Bridge be employing some of them?
I am sure they will. I am sure they will. And one thing that's important to note, while we celebrated a 10-year anniversary, we are in discussions now to look at how we can extend that partnership another five years.
I had the privilege of going up the Hudson River this summer, and I fell in love with the bridges, so I appreciate their work. Those bridges are unbelievable, and only one was broken, so very, thank you.
They build a strong product that's built to last. Thank you, trustees.
Any other comments from Dana?
No, I was just saying, thank you. It's always great to hear these numbers and the impact in the region, it's just mind-staggering.
Thank you.
One of the questions, does the community know about the numbers that we're talking about to the community, the dollar amount?
Well, Mary Curbin said.
You're lucky to share that.
The community college publishes absolutely articles about the regular newsletter, received by many of us in the community, and they also send out releases, but any opportunity that we can, we do. I will tell you one thing, and some of our union training folks have shared with us, that they've been here, like, maybe in the wintertime for a visit when they're going to the college, and they, when they tell people, people ask them who they are, they tell them, they say, "No, no, you come here in August," like, it's the UA, but they know they're here in the summer, and that's, it's like a household name, the unions are throughout the community. Total economic impact, I'm sure that they've heard, but not the exact numbers, but they do, everyone is very aware that they're here, and that they're here because of the community college.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, who did that move, that little film for the UA? Was that done in-house here?
Yeah, it's made by a media company in Apple's Maryland.
Is Marilyn finished? Are you finished?
Yes.
Well, then I have a question. With the understanding that this is wonderful news and marvelous work, my question usually is, what progress are these associations making with women and minorities? I heard you mention the one program with Washtenaw students, but I taught UA once a year, and I'm always curious as to how they're doing with that.
Right, so, I would say, each of these organizations has an incentive then to go out and increase their minority numbers, and they all actively participate. UA has a program specifically to recruit women nationwide, and so their numbers have gone from about 2% in the last, the UA, I'm not sure, 2% in the last five years, to 7% or 8%, and that's, that's pretty good.
That's women, yeah.
Yep, and it's not just recruiting them, it's retaining them.
That's right.
Because it's one thing to get into it, it's another thing to stay in them, it's a pretty tough job, so, they're working on it.
And minorities as well, or not yet?
And, well, this is just a little commercial here. I don't know how many of you saw that Dove commercial? Did you see the Dove commercial?
Yeah.
That, it was a Dove commercial, and it was a woman, ironworker, that was using Dove soap, you know, she's an ironworker, and her skin's so soft from Dove soap. And she was present at our training, I just like to know that little bit of tidbit there.
So, if ironworkers can use Dove soap, I guess it's a good.
Marilyn, of these people that were here, these thousands, how many are repeaters? In other words, how many will be back again next year, or is this a brand-new group every time?
No, it's not, the UA program is five years, so, they don't always go five years consecutively, but each year we have about 500 new students on campus for the UA program. For the OPC, MIA, what did we have? We had about, I think, 30 new students, yeah, this year.
Thank you. Any other questions for? Thank you.
Can I just make one last comment? I would like to thank all of you, Vice President Mueller, for your leadership in the area. I'd like to thank all the Vice Presidents for your support. Marilyn, you're amazing. Thank you, and it's our pleasure to work with the Ann Arbor Area and Conventions Bureau. I mean, it's a wonderful partnership, so, thank you. Thank you.
Local strategic value document. Dr. Morrison?
But tonight, we're here to present our annual local strategic value, which we come before you every year, as required by the state, and to demonstrate how we, as a college, meet best practices in our community. So, just a little bit of background, this is a yearly requirement for the state and has been since academic year 2011, 2012, and this is part of our budget process for the state. This year, this is as part of Senate Bill 134 of 2019. It's usually approved as part of the Education Omnibus Appropriations Act. This year, as you may very well be aware, the state has not yet approved the budget, and because of this, this is pending budget approval and then will become part of a public act. So, tonight, per requirement of the state, you'll be approving it using the Senate Bill number, but then, once the state approves the budget, it will actually go over and become part of a public act. This, the local strategic value, is one component of the state funding formula to determine the percent increase for each community college's budget, and we'll go over that formula in just a minute, and has to be passed by a board resolution. We send this to the state in mid-October, which is why we bring it to you every September, and trustees will find in, under Tab I, the actual document that we'll be going through in a minute, and you'll be able to follow along with us, and at the end of the meeting tonight during new business, you'll be voting on the resolution that we do in fact to meet these best practices. So, breakdown of the current funding formula for the local strategic value, and actually, this is the entire funding formula for that percent increase for state appropriations for community colleges in Michigan. You see, 30% is based on sustainability, which is really base appropriations. 30% is for weighted contact hours, our contact hours are weighted by health and technology disciplines, getting double the weight for contact hours. 10% is a completion improvement rate, that is improvement in a six-year completion rate. These are numbers that we give to the state every year, they're the same numbers that you might see us reporting to the voluntary framework of accountability, which we talk about every year as well. 10% is based on a completion number, these are numbers of certificates and degrees awarded every year that we report to IPeds. 10% is a completion rate, these are, this is a rate that's relative to the average of all 28 Michigan community colleges. This is also a six-year completion rate, the same one that we give to the state, also the voluntary framework of accountability number, and this includes certificates, degrees, and transfer rates. And then you'll see 5% of it's based on administrative costs, and as you'll probably remember, having lower administrative costs relative to things like instructional costs will give us a higher rating, and we always do very well there. And then lastly, you'll see 5% for the local strategic value. So, why is this important that we do every year? First of all, obviously, it enhances our opportunity for funding. Since they instituted this in 2011, 2012, every year we've received one of the highest percentage increases among comparable institutions. Secondly, it's part of transparency reporting, which we're required to do. All colleges in Michigan have to include the LSV as part of required reporting on their homepage. If you go to any community colleges' site, on their homepage, you will see a logo like you see there on their homepage, usually, and ours is in the bottom left-hand corner, and it will have lots of budget reporting, but will also have the document that we're going through tonight, so you can see what community colleges are saying they do in their communities that's important. And finally, and really, this is, this is really an important thing about why we do this every year, it showcases our impact in our community, it really documents the things that we do that are of specific value in our specific community. To meet the local strategic value, we need to address 15 best practices in three different categories, and need to meet four out of five in each of those categories. The three categories are economic development, business and industry partnerships, educational partnerships, and community services. And the best practices are really based on ensuring that we can meet the needs of the local economic development and our business and industry partners, and that we work well with our educational partnerships, meaning K-12, as well as other higher-ed institutions, and that we are serving the community in many different ways. So, we'll not go through all of the different, different best practices specifically there, but you'll see them as we go through the local strategic value document. And so, what we'll do tonight is, we'll have Vice Presidents Blakey, Hearns, Johnson, Mueller, and A V P Snyder go through kind of the highlights of what we're submitting this year. Every year, we submit something that talks about mainly what we've, what we want to highlight from the previous fiscal year, as well as things that are ongoing that we really feel are important about what we are doing in our community. So, what you have under Tab I is a version that's highlighted in yellow, the things that are highlighted are things that are either new in the last fiscal year, or are things that have been updated substantially enough in the last fiscal year that we really wanted to bring them to your attention tonight. So, we'll get started with V P Hearns, and we'll walk you through this, starting with the category economic development, business and industry partnerships.
Okay, so, as part of our continued growth in our healthcare programs, we relaunched some accelerated medical assisting courses, and we did that along with IHA, who's serving as a quality partner and providing us with clinical sites and recruiting for our students. We've also launched two new communities, community programs, Safe Sitter and our RE and Refresher Course, they've both been developed in 2018, 19, to meet community and professional development needs. We hosted two healthcare industry breakfast meetings, and this was to assist human resource professionals in solving talent management issues.
The college has 120 apprentices, a 10% increase over the prior year. We've worked with numerous separate companies, and including the following employers, Axis Engineering, Versia Manufacturing, Hoffman Filtration Systems, Ilmore Engineering, Jack Products, L N W, Magna International Incorporated, Mylan Metals, U of M General Maintenance, the UAW, and Zero Hour Parts. The college has also been working with the following employers in developing vehicle-to-infrastructure entry-level employment training. They include Danlog, Grim, Integral Blue, Siemens Mobility, and WSP, which was formerly known as Parsons Bickerhoff. The college held its first transportation and mobility career fair in spring 2019, hosting several employers in the mobility field, and in 2019, the college signed two new Michigan jobs training grant, program grant contracts totaling approximately $200,000 with Nova Coast Incorporated to train 87 new employees, and with White Pine Software Technologies LLC to train 10 new employees.
The college and the foundation worked together, as you heard Mary talk about, with Destination Ann Arbor to start a program, a scholarship program, for hospitality workers so that could advance their careers. It's a $100,000 grant, and will be a four-year program for the students coming here.
We started an LPN transition or RE program due to the high employer demand for continued training of LPNs. We've also launched a collaborative effort with the Living and Learning Enrichment Center to offer computer networking and cybersecurity training to individuals with autism, which includes offering hands-on lab space to provide skills for the workplace. This is part of an ongoing effort to ensure that all students have access to an education and skills training leading to employment. The Entrepreneurship Center added a new program this year and launched the Entrepreneurs in Residence Program to provide consulting by local business owners and deepen the center's mentoring capacity.
The SBDC's Greater Washtenaw Region hosted on the WCC campus, counseled 587 clients in the year-to-date and trained 338 individuals. Clients opened 42 new businesses, creating and retaining 495 jobs over six county region. In addition, as it relates to the Advanced Transportation Center, the college has been approved, as you know, for capital outlay funding for a facility dedicated to advanced technologies related to mobility. The college has continued to develop training for technicians and intelligent transportation systems, and is offering new classes in machine learning and mobility analysis in the fall of 2019. The college developed a partnership in 2018, 19 with Grim to build a state-of-the-art mobile hacking workbench to provide hands-on training to students and the community in auto cybersecurity. Grim has partnered with WCC for campus and community training at events such as My Career Quest Southeast. And in addition to that, the North American International Auto Show for the third consecutive Including two panels during the Future Automotive Career Exposition featuring WCC President Dr. Rose Blanca, the events also featured demonstration of the college's recently-acquired auto cyber educator ACE Mobile Hacking Workbench. The exhibit was visited by Governor Whitmer and Lieutenant Governor Gilchrist. The college's work in advancing the mobility sector through partnerships was highlighted through representation at the Intelligent Transportation Society of America. The college presented a mobility education webinar entitled "WCC: Shaping the Future of Advanced Transportation." of Advanced Transportation for I T S Michigan" in December of 2018. Further, in 2018, the college additionally began hosting the operative plasters and cement masons, bringing approximately 100 instructors to campus each, each summer that you just heard about. The college hosted the leadership of the United Union of Roofers, Waterproofers, and Allied Workers in 2019 to formalize their training program to begin in summer 2020 through the next five years. As well as on the I T S Michigan Board, were represented myself in particular and the Educational Advisor Committee of the American Center for Mobility and Partner with Business and Industry, and also the I T S Michigan Board's Talent and Workforce Committee, ensuring collaboration in connected vehicle technology development. The college also participates annually in the Ann Arbor Spark-sponsored Tech Track and recently added mobility role events in downtown Ann Arbor each June that works with business and industry. Mobility, mobility role promotes community and business interest in W C C's advanced automotive and I T technology programming. The college president serves in appointed positions on the following local and regional boards dedicated to economic development. Mich Auto Board, Executive Committee of the Ann Arbor Spark, and Southeast Michigan Council of Governments Economic Development and Education Reform Task Forces, and nationally on the Structured Pathways Commission for the American Association of Community Colleges. The college vice president for Economic College and Community Development, which would be me, serves on the Board of Workforce, of the Workforce Intelligence Network, the Ann Arbor Ypsilanti Smart Zone L D F A, and the Michigan Works Southeast Workforce Development Board. The college sponsors and hosts the Washtenaw Economic Club. The college hosted Michigan Works Summer Youth Employment Skills Training and orientations for more than 200 local teenagers in the last year.
The college has advisory boards to support all of our technical and occupational programs. And this year, the college launched a unique advisory committee for its liberal arts programs to connect faculty and business and amplify the key competencies required in the workplace and how they are taught through liberal arts courses.
The college's Office of Apprenticeship, particularly Marilyn Donham, sits on the Regional C E A C Career and Educational Advisory Committee Apprenticeship Subcommittee. As of 2018, the college hosts several Regional Apprenticeship Week events, including a Department of Labor-sponsored Apprenticeship in a Day Expedited Apprenticeship Event. In 2018, 19, the college's Career Services Department was transformed into Career Transitions to prepare employer students and the community for future jobs in assisting career step transitions. Last year, they assisted over 1,400 individuals, an 18% increase over the prior year. Their Career Transitions Department holds several industry-specific career fairs in partnership with regional employers each year, hosting approximately 70 employers and attracting over 150 attendees each semester. And in 2018, 19, they also hosted W C C's first-ever virtual career fair.
The college holds an active position on the Washtenaw Literacy Board, participating literacy development efforts across the county. The college also is in partnership with Ypsilanti District Library on a literacy outreach program specifically designed to increase literacy readiness for Ypsilanti area students.
And now we're moving on to educational partnerships.
The number of high school students that we have dual-enrolling at W C C now represents 10% of all of our new students. We are, in 18, 19 year, we offered 17 classes in area high schools, and we continue to partner with five public school districts for specialized programming. We also continue to share our Alex programming, which is math preparation, with our Ypsilanti partners. They've now incorporated that into all of their junior and senior level math courses, and we've seen an 80% increase in the high school students who are able to access college-level math courses at Washtenaw. And we also have expanded our C T E. We have our nursing assistant program. We added medical terminology along with CPR to that program, and we've expanded that program from 16 to 24 students for both the fall and winter semesters.
The college offered its first health career exploration camp this summer for middle school students, which included hands-on lab activities providing a taste of the skills required for a wide range of health careers. In February of this year, we launched, the college celebrated C T E Month in conjunction with STEM Week for the first time. The college community was engaged in learning about career and technical education through awareness hubs located across campus, and those hubs were also located and went on the road at the Harriet Street Center and Michigan Works Office. Our entrepreneurship center continues with our Bold Futures Program, and this summer we had 47 individuals attended from high school students at 18 different regional high schools.
The college also began participated in the Michigan Career Quest Southeast Career Exploration Event for high school students in 2018, 19, demonstrating equipment that trains students for the skills needed in the fields of advanced manufacturing, automotive, I T, health sciences, and construction.
And we finished up our third year of our Department of Labor Youth Bill Grant, and that we responded, we had 51 students, low-risk, at-risk students that were served in that grant, and we completed a home. We partnered with Habitat Humanity and completed a home for a family in Ypsilanti Township. We also partnered with Ypsilanti High School with Alex. We also use Alex and expanded into our summer bridge program, and we had many students raise their levels in math during our summer bridge program as well this summer.
We continue the W C C Scholars Learning Community, which brings together a diverse group of full-time, first-time, degree-seeking scholarship students who take a set of common courses together and share experiences around academics. Students work with a dedicated academic advisor and faculty to develop a deeper understanding of the core subject matter and build relationships in and outside of the classroom. The student, the Scholars Learning Community is focused on increasing the retention and graduation rates of this cohort. Students in the program had 100% retention rate from fall 2018 to fall, to winter 2019.
The W C C Foundation continued to expand its services, serving about 100 students this year to meet unforeseen emergencies such as utility shut-offs, rent, transportation, and food insecurities, providing up to $500 every time, not directly to the student, but on their account, helping stay in school. We're also putting a newfound effort on the Veterans Center to help our many veterans.
Our Stroll Processing Program has added an additional spring/summer accelerated program that students complete in 20 weeks rather than the traditional program, which is 30 weeks. This promotes a student's ability to be gainfully employed immediately upon graduation. As you heard earlier, we continue with our STEM Scholars Program, which we launched our first cohort in fall 2018. And we're proud to report that the six, of the 16 students from fall 2018, three graduates have transferred to four-year colleges, and our fall 2019 cohort has 35 students. In addition, we hosted more than 200 college and community participants as part of STEM Week, which included W C C alumni speaker, Ayesha Bowe, who worked for NASA. The college continues to update and add articulation agreements, which you've, you've seen from month to month. In the past year, we've added more than 10 new three-plus-one agreements, and we also forged new relationships with a variety of schools, including Oakland University, to provide as many options as possible for our transferring students.
And finally, community services.
The Parkridge Center that includes after-school tutoring, summer camp, financial literacy, and health and wellness, and recreational activities, it continues to enhance and collaborate with the city of Ypsilanti. And we also have activities at Parkridge that increased by 41% in 2018, 19 over the prior year. The college was awarded a second year of funding in 2019 through Washtenaw Coordinated Funding, a collaborative of six funding organizations, which has been used to enhance development of educational enrichment programs and services to support, to support programming for that part of eastern Washtenaw County. The college was approved for and implemented my C A A funding to support non-credit professional development offerings for military personnel and their families. The college offers an open house for the local community each spring and fall, and the most recent event in April 2019 drew over 500 community members to 30 free sessions. The college hosts cultural organizations on campus that are open to community member participation, such as community music ensembles, Ypsilanti Symphony, and Washtenaw Community Concert Band, language schools, the Anhua Chinese School, textiles, Ann Arbor Area Quiltin Guild, and, and, there isn't an "and," and many others providing enrichment opportunities.
The college serves as a partner with Michigan Humanities for the Great Michigan Reads Program, which is co-sponsored by Ypsilanti District Library, Library, Ann Arbor District Library, and local K-12 schools to bring a unified read and community discussion to the county.
Of course, the college's 500-seat Towsley Auditorium and other space in the Morris Lawrence Building on campus is used for many cultural activities throughout the year, and most recently adding the Workforce Pipeline Summit, the Osher Lifelong Learning Series, the Washtenaw Opioid Summit, and the W C C Climate Summit. The college also hosted over 100 lecture events for the University of Michigan Osher Lifelong Learning Institute last year. Each lecture drew an average of 350 seniors from the community for a broad range of topics, including immigration, exploring foreign cultures, and the future of our workforce. Conference Services supports events for organizations throughout the community on campus, including local nonprofits, local businesses, and other educational institutions. In 2018, 19, the college served as a community gateway to campus for more than 91,400 visitors. That's an 11% increase over the prior year.
The Health and Fitness Center continues to grow in its service of the community. We're now at a record high of about 7,000 community members. That's a growth of 500 of the prior year. We offer over 100 classes per week in service to our members. Also, the, the Health and Fitness Center provides a great avenue for engagement with nonprofits locally, and some of those include the S O S, the Side of the Road, the Lee Denham, the Moore Foundation, and the American Association for the University of Women.
The college established a quiet study lunch space and open reflection room for students in the campus community in fall of 18.
The college's digital and fine arts faculty and students collaborate regularly with community organizations to create art displays for public beautification and present student, faculty art exhibits in the community, which includes Kerry Town Concert House. The college's photography department continues to collaborate with the University of Michigan Health Center to provide portraits to cancer patients and their families.
The college continues to frequently host large-scale community events, such as charity walks or other activities that benefit the community and nonprofit organization, organizations, such as the Alzheimer's Association, American Cancer Society, American Diabetes Association, St. Jude's Children's Hospital, and Washtenaw Literacy United Way, and local law enforcement.
And through its presence at the Parkridge Center in Ypsilanti, the college hosts and oversees multiple community meetings to promote community involvement and volunteerism.
Our Center of Excellence, our Center of Excellence sponsors state and national health conferences for healthcare professionals, which include the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation, State of Michigan, and the Michigan Dental Association, as well as the Tri-County Opiate Summit.
That's it?
Oh. That's all we could do. I'm sorry.
Nicely choreographed. Are there any trustee questions?
I have a question. And, and congratulations to our vice presidents for reading really well. And, and for Julie to put this together, I know it's, it's a massive piece of work. My question is, do we get feedback on this? Aside from funding, does anybody say, well, you know, I really liked the community development part?
That's a great question. No, we do not.
No. Okay. So nobody, okay, never mind. But our funding does depend on somebody looking over this, or some summary of this at some point?
Correct.
Okay.
Maybe the upside is no complaints are allowed.
I understand, yes. You should put a little note upside down. Is anybody reading this?
I will say that the Learn Organization, which is our national association for workforce development, had asked if anybody had such a document on community economic development, those types of things with partnerships. And I submitted what we normally would submit to Washtenaw, or I mean, to, to my association. And they said, wow, this is a national best practice. You guys are just, this is amazing. And so they shared it with other colleges throughout the country in terms of how to really look at the impact that a division like ours and everyone else's here has on our mission.
Are we going to let Julie go around the state and teach people how to do this? Or are we just going to keep her for ourselves?
Keep her for ourselves.
Okay.
Well, really, I want to ask a, nothing is a stupid question, but it is kind of like, I don't know. I did read every Monday, President of M C C A, Mike Hanson, puts out his newsletter. And he talked about, it was in, in his report about this. Every college has to have to have it submitted by October 1st. But my question is, is that how do you get it to them? Do you, is it electronically filed? Do you mail it? Or what do you do? How do you get this to wherever it's got to go? Because it goes to the state, correct? How does it get there?
You email it, although it goes through, it goes through.
There's a, there's actually an approved distribution list, and it goes to a number of state offices, including a number of the Congress persons. So, yep, it's got a very wide distribution. And then also, as mentioned, it's posted out on our website as well.
Oh, okay. So it does go to, to Washington, D.C., to their educational department?
So, sorry, to the state of Michigan.
The state of Michigan Department.
The House and the Senate.
The House and the Senate. Okay. Because I didn't know where, and I didn't know how it was disseminated. Okay.
President Blanca?
Yes, but we do pull things out of here throughout the year. For example, when we do go to Washington, D.C., we may pull some of these items to speak to them about.
I just wondered if anybody read it, stated and responded. But that's okay. They give us money, that's all we need.
Well, that's what we're hoping. That's right.
Any other comments from trustees?
I guess I have a question. So if I went on the website for any community college in the state, I could read something similar and kind of gauge how they're doing, or what they're doing in relationship to what we're doing.
And it would, it should actually be the same template. This is a template that the state gives us.
So the template is what's kind of on the left side, and then we fill in the activities that we're doing. Now, when we submit it, do we highlight the stuff in yellow and say this stuff is new? Or are we just, it's all the same?
It's all the same.
We'd have to read the whole thing to you tonight if we didn't highlight certain parts.
Right.
That's the new stuff. That's what we did this year.
So the state can't, whoever reviews this can't really see how, what we're adding and how we're improving, unless they go back and look at last year's.
That's, that's correct, but they, they also give you, you know, they, they, it's reflective of the current fiscal year, but it's understood that it's kind of bigger picture. So I think it's more important that you're addressing the best practices.
And it's important that we approve it to them.
It's required, that there's a board resolution.
We'll get around to that. Thank you.
Well done. Excellent work.
Personnel recommendations. V P Veltre?
Good evening, board members. It is truly not our intent to overwhelm you with information tonight. But as you might expect with the start of the new academic year, this month's report is fairly substantial. As you review the report, and as you've heard earlier, we have a number of new faculty and staff that we are very excited to welcome to our campus. I would also like to note, with the close of the previous academic year, we had a number of faculty and staff who have retired. We had a total of 10 faculty and staff members who retired who collectively had over 250 years of service. Individually, eight of those 10 had over 20 years of service, including Noonie Anderson, who is a professional faculty member with Performing Arts, Michael Galliot, professional computer instructor with 21 years of service, Thomas Hemstager, professional faculty in the Automotive Services Department with 27 years of service, Gene Miller, professional faculty in English and Writing with 30 years of service, Hank Thompson, a professional faculty member in the public service careers area with 28 years of service, Colette Young, professional faculty within our business division with 32 years of service, Irene Brock, an acquisitions tech with 27 years of service, and finally Jeff Patrick, who was a building custodian, who retired with 35 years of service after college. As Mr. Fitzpatrick so eloquently stated- As Mr. Fitzpatrick so eloquently stated earlier tonight, each one of these individuals have skills and talents that we will certainly miss, and collectively, they have institutional knowledge and history that certainly we won't be able to replace. But obviously, each one of them has enjoyed a rich and full career here at WCC, and certainly have earned the right to enjoy the next phase of their life, and we wish them well in their retirement, and just wanted to acknowledge them with the board tonight.
You're here.
Thank you. Any comments? Trustee Hatcher?
I'd just like to congratulate David Fitzpatrick on his math. It was 159 years of teaching. That's what I'm saying, for English. I did have a question about the Erin Anderson that was mentioned as new English. Is that a temporary full-time position? It's not a permanent?
Yes, it is. Because Jean's retirement was kind of later in the process.
Right. But it's a year-long.
Yes.
It's a year-long position. I'm very happy to have been introduced to new vice presidents and new deans and new faculty. But I do recall that I asked to meet the new police officers, and was told that we don't introduce new staff and faculty. So at some point, perhaps we could do that, since we are introducing new staff and faculty. I'd sort of like to know who those people are. They've been here for a while now, but we've never had them introduced at a board meeting. We do have...am I correct in saying one vacant vice president position in facilities, or a building, or something?
Associate...we posted it as an associate vice president.
Okay. And it's posted?
Yes.
Okay. I guess those are all my questions.
Any other trustee comments?
No, I will stop.
We have a motion in front of us to approve the personnel recommendations as listed. Do I hear support?
Support.
And...support, support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion is approved. Financial reports. Phil, would you like to...the recommendation? Give us a presentation on this?
Yes, please.
Please.
So, for the board tonight, we're actually going to have two separate presentations on the year-end 2019 financial results. This one is kind of the normal format, the general operating fund for the board. A little later, we're actually going to present the audit results, which is the full consolidated results of the college, including restricted funds, plant funds, all that kind of good stuff. So that's a little later. But we'll start with the normal report. So this is for June 30th, 2019, fiscal year-end. Please report that to the board, that we have a surplus for the year of about 2.8 million. That surplus is after the recording of a one-time cost related to the IT Transition Assistance Plan of 2.3 million for the year. That was the actual cost for the Transition Assistance Plan. Revenue was up about 2.2 million, of which about half that amount was in property tax revenue. And then also note that tuition...you might note that summer tuition is shown as being under budget, but that really is timing. This particular summer semester started a week later, and so summer bridges over two fiscal years, we have to recognize in fiscal 19, that portion that relates to 19, and that balance goes into the next year. So actually, because of a one-week adjustment, there was a reduction in this year's revenue, meaning fiscal 19. The good news is that fiscal '20 summer revenue will actually be a bit higher because of that recognition of the balance of the summer 19 revenue. Trustee Hatcher?
Is that what the second sentence in paragraph 2 means?
Yes.
Okay. I was glad someone explained that to me.
It's a cross of accounting lingo with financial narrative.
Hokey-do.
Yes. So revenue was about 2.2 million. On the cost side, we were actually were lower than budget, about 2.2 million. Personnel cost was about right on budget. But to remind the board, in-personnel cost was a one-time cost related to the resolution of the MEPs' part-time student issue, which was just under a half a million dollars. Absent that one-time adjustment, we actually would have been better than budget in personnel, about a half a million dollars. So most of the underage in our cost side was in the non-personnel, or what we call direct expenditures. And that really was across the board. It was across the college, a little bits here and there where budgets were...spend was not quite at budget levels. And that's about consistent with prior years. We generally will run one and a half to two and a half million below budget for expenditures for the year. It really reflects the strong stewardship across the college of our resources. It's been...in my time here, I've noticed just how well, how strongly folks who they've got to know their budgets, and the thoughtfulness that they put into how they spend their budget resources. It really is outstanding. Trustee Hatcher?
That doesn't affect their budget for next year, does it?
It does not. It does not affect their budget for next year. So that...financially, we had a surplus of 2.8 million, as I said, including the one-time cost of about 2.3 million. Also like to draw the board's attention to page...the last page in your package, which is the investment portfolio of the college. The top portion of this schedule is like every other month. It basically shows the type of investments that we have, the amount within that type we have, and the duration to maturity. The board, a few years back, approved a revision to our investment policy that requires that the college make sure that our long-term investments meet certain criteria. So those criteria are laid in the bottom half of this page, in investment type, credit rating, and the working capital reserve. I'm pleased to report that in all categories that we have stayed within the prescribed covenants, if you will, of our investment policy. So, for example, under investment type, US bonds or bills. The target range is 25% to 65%, with a target of around 30%. The current mix at June 30th was 36%. So that kind of gives you an example. You will note under credit rating, we actually...the board had approved that when we saw it appropriate and worth the risk, that we would take lower credit rating investments. We strive hard to find those, but when we have found those, we have never found them to be worth the risk, and so opted to go with more safer, higher-rated investments. So you can see that all of our investments are in the top-rated category for that. And last but not least, we have a working capital reserve policy, which basically says that on average, that we have to maintain in cash about 5%...cash or cash equivalents, 5% of our operating budget, which is about 5.4 million. The lowest point that we reached this year was about 8.4 million. So we made sure that we were within the reserve criteria.
Any questions? Trustee Hatcher?
In the audit, and this may be just my ignorance, the audit mentions commercial paper. Is commercial paper represented on this page?
It is not. This is our long-term investments. So we also have a fair amount of money from day to day in short-term investments, which is commercial paper.
And that's the commercial paper. Thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion in front of us that the Board of Trustees receive the financial reports for June 2019 as follows: General Fund, Deferred Maintenance Fund, Capital Fund, Combined Schedule of Investments, All Funds. Do I hear support for such a motion? Some who?
Support.
All...any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Sticking with VP Johnson, the facilities report, please.
Very good, thank you. Just a couple of points for the board. One is that you'll note that, as it should be, that many of these projects that you'll see are complete. This has been a busy season for us within the Facilities Division. Item 2 on Page 1, the ML firing range is just about complete. We're in the final stages of the installation of the lighting and the finishes. Our target is by the end of October for that. I also just kind of point out for the board on the top of Page 2, a very major project for us is in the Liberal Arts Building, the chemistry repairs. 90% of that work's going to be done from the 1st of December to about the second week in January. We did have some very critical work that had to be done in preparation for that. In the one-week window we had between the end of UA and the start of the semester, we were able to get that work done. It was a success for us, and we're ready to go on December 1st with that project. Those are my main points.
Trustee Hatcher?
I am thrilled to report that the women's hot tub is operational.
Oh, my God. Oh, my God. Trustee Davis?
I have a question in reference to all the projects that are listed and have been listed here for some time, you know, going through this completion, progress, things that are up to bat, you know, to get started on. Is there anything here on the campus that hasn't been addressed in terms of needing to be replaced, like a building structure needs to be replaced or maintained in some manner, that hasn't been considered to be added here on the list? And I'm asking because...and I know this question may seem out of the blue, because I had the opportunity to attend SimCOG meeting last week. This was in reference to winter maintenance. But this question is not referencing winter maintenance. It's because the facility in which the meeting was held, at the Row Commission's building on North Territorial Road, is a brand-new facility. And I got to wondering, because I, you know, hear the facilities reports all the time, and I was wondering how is our facility here? Because I kind of see, like, our equipment, trucks and stuff, are sitting outside, and I was wondering, is it possible that our trucks and other equipment could sit on the inside, so it'll be out of inclement weather? What is the state in which our building for the Facilities Division can be rehabbed? And I know that's a tough question, and I never asked you that before, because I didn't know to ask until I went to the SimCOG meeting, and I looked at this brand-new fabulous building. Like, I didn't know that we make our own brine. I was like, "What is brine?" Well, we...you know. So I learned these things, so I'm bringing it back here to ask you, because you're in charge of that area. Is that...is the facilities building, that structure, is it on the horizon to be, you know, rehabbed in any way, to make it more updated? Because I know we're moving into really getting a master plan together, as we've been discussing that for a good while. And I hadn't seen that here on this list of projects to do. And so I want to make sure that we don't miss anything, and then have to double back later and say, "Oh, my gosh, shoulda, woulda, coulda." But then, you know, as that goes, kind of lead.
I very much appreciate that question on two fronts. You started with, are we worried about any projects that aren't on our list that should be on the list?
Right.
And I really will address that when we talk about the capital outlay report. There's a whole section where we lay out...and I spent about a month this summer going through the assessment of our entire campus, and laying out a master plan for all the deferred maintenance, and that really is embodied in that capital outlay report. So I'd be glad to go through that, and I do think that we have a strong plan for that. As to the second half of your question, the maintenance building is in a state of disrepair. It does need to be addressed, and later this fall, we'll be bringing some recommendations on some major projects to upgrade our buildings, including the Morris Lawrence Building, the Student Center Building, and our maintenance building, because that really does need to be addressed, and we're going to be presenting a whole master plan to build a new maintenance building that will address not only current needs, but also how to protect the vehicles of our facilities.
Well, that's great, you know, to hear you say that. Because, you know, as I stated, I hate to see, you know, all the progress that we make in...that we've been making thus far, and then we miss something along the way, whether intentional or not. That's not the case, but that some things, you know, just kind of fall through the cracks, and it's always good to make sure that we have those cracks sealed, and we have a solid plan still going forward, and that everything that we could even think of has already been, you know, looked at, assessed, and taken care of. Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that conclude your report?
It does. Thank you. Oh, sorry. Trustee McDaymore?
Yes. On the report here for Campus Repair Maintenance Projects Update, I would like, if Vice President Johnson, if you could talk about the non-motorized pathway from SimCOG, if you don't mind?
Absolutely. Yes. That is a project that, you know, the board had approved, our involvement in that. It was on to the presumption of a certain cost to the college, which was only a portion of the total cost. That is bid out once at a very high cost. As a college, we were not prepared to bring back a recommendation to increase our share at that time. We threw it back on the county. They re-engineered that and put it back out for bid again this summer. The bids came back in. They were the good news. They were much lower than the original set of bids. The bad news is, they were still higher than what we had authority at the college, we let coming back to the board. So we asked the county to re-address to see if SemCOG could put in extra money to help to shore up that difference. The good news is that we believe that SemCOG is willing to put up the majority of that money, with just a little bit of additional money coming back to the college. So our total cost would be under 100,000, which is only about 20,000 more than the original amount that had been estimated. So we've given the green light back to the county and to SemCOG, that as a college, that we would be able to support it at that slightly higher cost, and they're going out now, they being the county, to execute the contract based on that bid, and with SemCOG's strong support for that extra amount of money.
Thank you. When I was at my meeting with SimCOG regarding this, we were talking about different projects, and this came up. And I'm looking at the person who was in charge of this, and he then tells me...because I did ask about, was the project on target? And that's when he told me about that it had gone out, and it came back, and that if the county did not lower their price lower than what they had originally had, that they would pick up the slack. And so I was happy about that. And then I heard that, well, they didn't want to at first, but through strategy, through...with Vice President Johnson and his strategy, it worked where they came back and said that they would pick up the slack. So I'm happy about that. And it should start pretty soon?
Soon.
Pretty soon. Been two years. Thank you. Thank you.
We're good?
Yes, thank you.
We're now at the point in our agenda where we invite trustee remarks. Do any of the trustees here at the table have anything to add this evening?
I would just like to say, man, I must have had a good time over the summer. It went by just like that. It really did. And it's great to be back, see all you guys, and I'm really looking forward to this year. This is an awesome year. We have a lot of things coming down the pipe that I know we're going to be successful at and then some this time around, not to say that we didn't before. But, you know, always moving forward with an even more positive outlook. I think that this year is going to be exceptional. And I really appreciate spending another year with you all.
Thank you. And I now turn to President Blanca. President, your remarks, please.
I don't want to step on her.
I apologize. I didn't see you.
I have three concerns that can't be addressed tonight. But I'm wondering about our policy regarding free speech, which has been in the news lately, and if we're tight with that and everything is okay with that? Maybe a little presentation about what we do for that. I'm concerned about immigration and what our police are doing in conjunction with legal authorities in Washtenaw County and what our policies are with respect to that. And I continue to be concerned about minorities in the apprenticeship programs and in the unions that are here. With women, that's a wonderful 10% increase in the women, but you don't see brown faces in UA or in the cement or in the ironworkers. And it seems to me we have a responsibility to encourage that. They like us. They like being here. And as we were talking before, the problem with minorities in those apprenticeship programs is primarily preparation, math and so forth. It seems to me that if the U-uns are concerned enough to have minorities in their training programs, that they can sponsor programs in the high school and elementary school that will give them people who are qualified to do that. It's something we all have to do. We do it at the college here. And I continue to expect the people who use our campus and contribute to our community to have that same concern.
I echo what she says. And it's always been an issue for years and years, when I was even with the county in workforce development. Not very many African-Americans wanted to go into apprenticeship programs, but they did. But there was always a blockage. And even the unions did say it's because not just African-Americans, but a lot of the youth don't have the necessary skills that they're seeking. And it's a lot of skills, soft skills, academic skills, math, reading, so on and so forth. So, you know, and I agree with trustee Hatcher saying that something has to be started in the lower levels before they get here or want to get into those programs. That's the main issue.
Thank you. Any other comments? And as I turn to President Blanca, first I want to compliment her on her penmanship, which is encumbered by this thing she's wearing on her wrist. I'm watching her, and she's doing well. President Blanca.
Thank you. I guess we have some photos? We had a great start this summer, as you know, with the UA. We heard a great report. And I'd like to welcome all the faculty and staff back on campus. Our fall in-service was quite successful. It was on sustainability. And I know I'm not following the script, so whoever's doing this is going to kill me. So let me back up for a minute. In your packet, you receive this every, you receive an update every fall. And the faculty and staff did receive this. This is our, these are accomplishments of our strategic plan this past year, academic year. And this culminates, actually, the sixth year of success of our strategic plan. And I'd just like the board to know that we've already initiated our next three years. And we'll be sharing those strategies with the board probably in a month or so, Julie, I think, to give you some input and to also share our thoughts with you. So, and this great publication was put together by our marketing department. So thank you so very much, Matt. I'd like to, one of the highlights of our in-service this year was the screening of a movie called Unlikely, which addressed, it was a documentary that investigates America's college dropout crisis and the barriers that students face in the pursuit of their teaching and learning. I'd like to thank the TLC and the Faculty Professional Development Committees for their work on this important program, and Teresa Hunt, in particular, in Educational Services. Women Helping Women, our reception. I'd like to thank AVP Phil Snyder for the WCC's foundation support in hosting the WCC Women's Council Women Helping Women's reception. This reception helps raise the awareness of the council's shattering the glass ceiling, as is the pins, and it helps to support the Student Emergency Fund. Now, in its second year, we have 70 donor members. I'd like to thank trustee McKnight-Morton and Milliken for attending the event.
Appreciate being included. Thank you.
Thank you. SEMCOG announces the assessment of road conditions across the region. And at this point, I'd really like to acknowledge the work that trustee McKnight-Morton does on the SEMCOG Board. As you, I sent the board members this morning a little, just a little notice that SEMCOG recently awarded $44,000 in state funds to communities across the region to support road asset management, including 1,416 miles in Washtenaw County. And trustee McKnight-Morton sits on the SEMCOG Executive Board and its Talent Education Task Force. And, you know, I've been here, for the time that I've been here, all these years, nine years, and we've been involved with SEMCOG, I think, the last three or four, I have seen a difference, that our participation, just by having, you know, attendance at these meetings, a difference that is making for our college as well as for the county. So thank you so much. Let's see. I'd like to thank Marilyn Dunham for bringing the Union of Roofers, Waterproofers, and Allied Workers to the signing. I'd like to thank trustees Milliken, McKnight-Morton, Davis, DeVarty, and Fleming for attending the ceremony. We had the best Police Academy graduation ceremony.
Whoa, look at that.
You know, I hate that dress. We had the best ceremony. I've never seen anything quite like it. First of all, we had 28 new Police Academy recruits. They completed 864 hours of training over a period of 19 weeks. And 16 of the students, is it 16? I thought it was 21 out of the 26 already had job offers.
Yeah, it's 25.
25 out of the 26, okay. So what was so impressive about this? First of all, the ceremony itself was impressive. But the fact that every, I shouldn't say every, that many police departments send police officers or sheriffs to this graduation, along with ours. And so while, you know, while this ceremony is going on and after they're pinned and receive their certificate, every single graduate goes through, shakes not only the hands of the people that are on the stage, but all the officers that are in the attendance. How many officers do you think you had that day?
About 72.
72. They all stand up. They circle around the room in front of the stage, and every graduate shakes the hand of every single officer. And I just think it's so wonderful because, you know, that job is so important. And to see them welcoming them into their departments is really impressive. So Brandon, you did a great job.
May I add something in that regard?
Sure, of course.
The Michigan Community College Conference that several of us attended in Traverse City, James Fallows was one of the speakers, author, radio commentator. And he noted that 80% of law enforcement in this country have studied at community colleges. And I was astounded that we had that kind of representation.
Wow. Thank you.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Is there any way that we can get statistics on what percentage of these graduates coming out of our program are either females and/or people of color?
Of course we can.
Because it's, I'm looking at a
I would think so.
Pretty male-oriented and white cadre up there and also in the law enforcement community and hoping that we could play a part in, be part of educating people or providing opportunities for people of color and women to enter that field. And I don't know how to do it exactly. But as I'm looking at that picture, it's one of the things that concerns me.
We actually have one of the most diverse classes in the state. So there's 20.
It does look kind of white though.
Yeah, I know. Within that, there were six women, which is up from the previous year. There were three people of color. And as we look at diversity and sexual orientation, we actually had the first openly gay officer in that class whose husband is actually a cop within that army. So in terms of diversity, it's always something we're trying to strive for. I know the sheriff and other chiefs of the local areas have been trying to sponsor candidates and offer up kind of a free experience to get minorities, people of color in. But it's getting better than what it was, and we still have a long way to go.
I guess I'm looking for things that we could do to increase the diversity of the enrollment. And I'm not sure that there is because a lot of these candidates are coming from programs that are sponsoring them and policing programs. But I'd like to see some brainstorming or some thoughts about what we could do providing this education that we could increase the diversity even more.
High school counselors? Raising awareness there?
I don't know, but
No, we can do an awareness campaign, sure. There are things. Well, you know what? We'll get back with you and let you know what we brainstormed. And of course, if you have any ideas, you're welcome.
You just heard mine.
Great, okay.
Mine is starting with kindergarten and teaching math. Just saying.
And reading.
Working with the elementary schools because they're not prepared when they get to be 18.
Right.
They can't read
Right.
when they graduate from impulsive high school. A lot can't.
I know.
And that's something we can do something about.
Well, thank you. I know.
I have two cents, but I'm not going to say it.
Three?
It could be five.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then we also had our annual scholarship reception. And that was very well received. Where we, this year we awarded 135 scholarships for, and this, these aren't the foundation scholarships. This is the scholarship reception for the President's Scholarships, the Pracassini Scholarship, and Excellence Scholarship. And it was great. All of the deans were present, and it was a good opportunity to meet the parents. It was a dinner for the parents as well as the students. So it was a great evening. Thank you.
Does that conclude your report?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to new business.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Me again.
I keep missing you. I called you.
I've heard from various faculty that that film you talked about during in-service was really quite remarkable. And I wondered if we could see it. Is it long or short?
It's not, it's not long. I'm working on getting some more copies and showtime. So we are working on that right now.
Thank you.
Are we good?
Yes, ma'am.
New business. VP Johnson, FY19, please.
Thank you. It's going to be a two-part presentation today. We have myself, once again. And then I'm going to invite up Tom Winkelman, who's a partner with Raymond, who will walk through their audit process and audit findings and give that report to the board. So we had gone through, we had gone through the general operating fund for the board. And as I mentioned, there are other parts to the financials. There's the restricted fund, there's the pension fund, and there's the plant fund. And so it's, just frame in your mind, we had a surplus of 2.8 million. That's what the board, the budget basis the board approves and we report on. This is going to present that we have a loss for the year of 5.1 million. So how do we get from a surplus of 2.8 to a loss of 5.1? I'm going to take you down this little journey towards that. So as I mentioned, 5.1 million is the full consolidated loss for the college for the year. That's in accordance with GASBIA accounting standards. And we have this little thing called GASBIA 68 and 75, which is, the MEPS' pension plan is GASBIA 68 accounted for and GASBIA 75 we adopted last year, which was the other post-retirement benefits. Combined, that had a loss of 5.8 million. So that's the lion's share of that walk from surplus of 2.8 to a loss of 5.1. As I mentioned, the general fund had a surplus of 2.8 million. And this year, we also carry, in addition to the current year activity, we also carry our portion of the state's unfunded liability, which grew by $16 million. Our liability on our balance sheet now is $183 million for the year for both GASBIA 68 and 75 pension and other post-retirement benefits. Of the net assets, you say, well, do we still have any net assets left of the college, right? And the good news is that we do. And that is really good. And that really shows the strength. We still have just under 20 million in net assets. 131 million or so is in our capital assets as a positive. And we have this 153 million in net asset loss related to all the GASBIA 68 and 75. And I've got a few slides to show you the details of that. Really important, that second bullet. We actually improved the unallocated unrestricted assets of the college by about 3.4 million. So, and what does that mean? It means that basically that we've added about 3.4 million to our general fund reserve to improve, if you will, the rainy day fund of the college. And that was really important because about five, six years ago, we had a very minimal amount. And each and every year, we've been able to add just a little bit each and every year. And it's up over $30 million now that we have in unallocated unrestricted general fund reserves that we have. The third bullet is that through the lens of the Higher Learning Commission, they asked us to report what's called the Composite Financial Index, CFI index. And it's four different ratios that measure the financial strength of the college to remind the board what they're looking for on a before-the-impact of GASBIA 68 and 75, that that rating, that ratio, be at least a 3.0. And I'm pleased, I'm pleased to report that our ratio is a very strong 4.64 on a pre-GASBIA 68 and 75. Now, when we report to the Higher Learning Commission later this year, we also have to report that after GASBIA 68 and 75. And that negative number is getting larger. So we were about 2.6 negative last year. Now it's a 3.78 negative this year. But again, the Higher Learning Commission looks at the pre-68 and 75 number, and that's a very strong number for the college. So a little bit about the numbers. This is the net position or the balance sheet, the assets and the liabilities of the college. A note on line four for total assets. We stayed about level for the year. We stayed about, about level for, for the year. And although that our capital assets after, after depreciation have been going down a little bit each year, we actually have depreciation expense of about seven million a year. We haven't been adding seven million of new asset investment. So our, the value of our capital assets actually goes down a little bit each year, reduces our, our total assets of the college a little bit. But what's fully offsetting that is the general fund reserves that we're adding. So the strength of the college in terms of the surpluses helped to make our total assets of, of the college stay strong year over year. You'll note on line seven, the non-current liabilities that actually grew by a significant amount. That's the impact of GASB sixty-eight and seventy-five. And then if you look at line twelve, other, this is the net, net, net position. Assets less our liabilities. So this is kind of the net position, and if you look at other unrestricted, that actually grew a little bit. That's that three point four million that I mentioned. So overall, the balance sheet position of the college is strong with the growth in the liabilities coming from the, the impact of GASB sixty-eight and seventy-five. Moving on to, to operating results, you'll see that our operating revenue stayed about flat for, for the year, and that our general fund expenses at a high level, once you back out the one-time impact. So for instance, the one-time impact for the, the IT transition cost of two point three million would be a good example of, of one of those. That our operating fund, our general operating expenses grew about four point one million. I have a slide a bit later that shows you where, where, where that growth came, came from. A little deep, deeper dive into operating revenues, you'll note that tuition and fees stayed about level year over year. Our enrollment dropped about one percent in total credit hours, but that was more, more than offset by two key things. One is a larger percentage of our credit hours is in distance learning. Distance learning tuition rates are slightly higher than on-campus rates. So as a credit hour goes, we earn a little bit more money, which helps. And secondly, the board approved an increase to our technology fee last year going from seven dollars to ten dollars. And so that, that extra fee revenue helped to offset the credit hour decline. Auxiliary services grew another three hundred thousand. I think I had mentioned in the strategic value presentation that we had growth in the health and fitness center. That's strong, and that's really important, that it stays strong, because we, we need to return all of that margin that we get from the, the fitness center to help support the debt service, which is about one point one million a year, and the deferred maintenance, things like the women's hot tub, and, and boilers, and hot, and hot water systems, those, those things that are, that are critical. If you look at operating expenses, moving on to the next slide, you will, you'll see there's, there's growth of about ten, ten million dollars in, in total year over year. But when you peel out the impact of GASB sixty-eight and seventy-five, it's only about four point one million that is, I'm going to call it, real operating cost growth. And that, and that, that four, four point one million really came from, from normal inflation, the compensation increases, the, the investment in the instruction side of the house. And you'll note on line two that technology costs were higher, and those were higher in part, in large part because of the two point three million one-time cost that is found itself in that line.
Aside from the depreciation change in percentage, the, the only real change was from a one percent loss of, in instruction and then one percent gain in technology. So is that the two point three million, and it's coming out of instruction in the general fund?
Basically, when, so that's a really good, good point. If, if we didn't have the two point three million one-time cost in technology, the percentage of our total budget that, that instruction would have been, would have been at least at the, at the thirty-seven percent that it was the prior year.
Yeah, so instructions taking that hit.
It's not taking the hit, it, it takes a hit in terms of a percentage count-
Yep.
-but not in total investment, because you will see that we went up about two and a half million dollars in total, which is about a five, five percent increase year over year in instruction. So on a proportionate basis, we actually had a higher percentage increase in instruction than we did in others, once you peel out that, that one-time cost for technology.
You can make a one percent decline into a ten percent increase. I love it. Okay, keep going.
And it's real.
Yeah.
So, if you look at our, our non-operating revenue, we were up about five, five million dollars. Really, really interesting things to, to point out here is the Pell Grant Award that were actually down about nine, nine hundred thousand. It wasn't that we had less students year over year, a little bit was less students, right? But if you look at just generally speaking, the number of students that are eligible for Pell year over year was down a little bit. So that's just, that's important for you to know. And that state appropriations was up, but, but that's all timing in nature. That's not real cash. It's just timing in nature from an accounting recognition standpoint. It just weighted more of the accounting recognition for state appropriations in, in, in the current, the, the current years. The only thing that I'll point out for the board is that the investment in, in interest income is up significantly year over year. We've, our cash flow models are getting fairly precise now, so we, we try very hard to not leave any idle cash and get that all working for us, either long-term or short-term, as, as the question was raised in the prior presentation there. Going on to cash flows, you will see that, that if you look on slide ten for cash flows, that we actually had a net decrease in cash for the year of three, three point three, and that compares to a positive two point two. That seems to be counterintuitive to what I just said, that we actually put money in the bank. Kind of the story here is that we actually have taken more of our cash and have invested it. So less cash in the bank, more cash has been invested, and that's the sole reason why we have a decline in year over year, because we're putting that cash to use for the college in terms of investments. But overall, we still put about three point four million extra cash in, in the bank for the college. And then lastly, the last two slides is, is a picture of both revenue. Trussi, do you have a question?
No, I'm sorry. I was just looking.
The percentage of our operating, our general fund revenue, and you can see it's stayed fairly steady. The support we get from the county is tremendous. Forty-eight percent tuition fees is staying very stable at thirty percent, and state aid around fourteen percent. And then if you go to the last slide for general fund expenses, you will see that, that instructions is staying very steady at forty-two percent. The technology slice here is a little larger, and again, it's because of that one-time cost. That's going to come back down in fiscal twenty to a more nor, normal range of seven to eight percent is what the technology costs. And then you, then you can see the rest of the slices of the pie for that.
Got a question.
Trussi, you already?
Where, we have debt service on loans, like for the-
We do.
For various facilities or construction projects. Where would that appear here, or would it be broken up?
It's actually in the, you wouldn't see it here. It's, it's back in the, the plant fund, actually. So it's, it's not shown in this one. It would be back, it's in the, the institutional, I'm trying, trying to find, trying to hear.
Is it operating?
It's, it's the non-operating revenue, so it's on slide eight. The interest on capital assets related to debt, and you'll see the interest-
Oh, so that's negative two sixty-two?
Yep.
That's our debt service?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
What does the bar chart on state aid look like over several years?
Well, that's, that's a really good, good question. We just had a request for that. So we actually went back for the entire his, history of the college and looked at state aid as a percent of our total revenue. And it hit a high watermark back in the nineteen seventies. I don't remember the exact year, at about thirty-seven percent of our oper-
Nineteen seventy.
Nineteen seventy, thank, thank, thank you, Phil. So it was about thirty-seven percent, and today it's about fourteen percent.
And what was the, in terms of expense last year for instruction? Was it forty-two percent?
It, I think it would have been slightly higher, but only because of the anomaly of the one-time cost for technology. Been like forty-three percent.
Yeah.
My question is more geared, geared toward the decline of babies being born. And, and by, I'd say fifteen years, babies, there will be a significant decline of, of, you know, children coming to community colleges. And so I know that we're saving money, but how can we cushion ourselves through the years so that we can be able to afford to have a community college here with a decline of enrollment?
Sounds like a good retreat question.
Go ahead.
Just as a general rule, right, that we are, that our, the strategies that the college has been employing recently, within the last one, one to two years, is to look at the growth in the adult market. So there is, there's tremendous opportunity for the college to make sure that we have programs and meet the needs of the adult students who's either had gone in for one career, now doing a career shift, or to gain additional certifications and skills within their, the career of their choice. So that's a big area of, of focus for us and working on that.
And also not to mix two different concepts here, but you recall in our master plan, we talked about the mixed use and, and looking at that mixed use property to decide what we could do with it. And the whole reason that we would look at that is for exactly that, so that we could increase revenue for that, you know, when that comes, you know, when that eventual decline hits us.
Thank you.
One more question, and I want to keep reminding myself of this. On page three, you've got this ratio that the Higher, Higher Learning Commission looks at of four point six four. If we issue debt, doesn't that ratio improve?
Yeah.
Like if when, when we're doing these building projects, like the Morris Lawrence rehab or where the facility's building, if we're issuing some debt, my recollection, and remind me if I'm wrong, is that the way those ratios work out is that actually boosts that ratio number?
The composite ratio, it actually is going to reduce the, the overall ratio. You are right that elements, there's four different ratios, and one of those actually does improve, but there are, there are different weightings for the different four ratios. And so if you look at it on a composite basis, and we're doing some modeling right, right now on that, is that the ratio would come down, but still be well into the threes. So solid, so solidly in the threes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So we do have a second part of this. I need to introduce Tom Winkelman, who's a partner from Raymond, and Tom is going to present to the board the audit process and audit findings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You might recall that I'd been here a few months ago, and at that time, I let you know that we were starting the audit process and reminding all of you, the trustees, that I work for you, I report to you, and I'm here today to kind of fill you in on the backend of the results of the audit. We'll go through several documents here. They're in tab E, I believe, in your, in your notebook. I previously went through these reports with trustee Davis, and I appreciate the overall financial summary that was provided here. The first document, if we can go through, is the, it's the first letter. It's called the Communication with Those Charged with Governance. This letter, I won't read everything in all these documents, but I will highlight a few things. Please feel free to, to stop me and ask me any clarifying questions, and I'll be happy to address them. This letter summarizes our, begins with summarizing our responsibility as independent auditors, which we talked about a few months ago. The planned scope and timing of our audit went as planned, and we appreciate the preparedness and readiness and assistance of the, of the college's finance team. That made the process go very smoothly. We are, we are required to be and, and are independent of the college. As an overall comment on the financial and the accounting policies and practices of the college, they are very consistent with the prior year, and there are no significant changes to report. We did not have any significant difficulties with our audit. Like I said, it was very smooth. If there were any large adjustments to the numbers that we received as an outcome of our audit procedures, we would have to communicate those to you, and I have nothing to report. There were no, no adjustments. We did not have any disagreements with management, and like I said, it was a smooth process. The remainder of that first attachment talks about some upcoming accounting pronouncements, and we as a CPA firm provide educational opportunities to the college staff to help keep them abreast of, of emerging issues. But if there's no questions, let's go to the first document or the first financial document. I believe the next one we have is titled Single Audit Act Compliance. And as a reminder, we do two, two types of audits. One is of the financial statements, and one is of federal awards. College receives a lot of federal award money, in fact, about thirty-one million dollars of federal war, federal awards. This document here discusses our report and our audit on that piece, the federal awards There's a summary page, and I'll just direct your attention to. On page nine, it talks about the audit results. When we conduct our audit of federal awards, we choose major programs. The major program of the college from a federal awards perspective is the student financial aid, all of the, all of the student aid that flows through the college. It's about twenty-nine million out of the thirty-one million, and so we focus our attention primarily on that. As a result of our procedures on that, there were no findings, and there's, there's nothing to report to you that's unsatisfactory. The third document, which is the biggest document, is the financial statements. About seventy pages or so, I won't read them. The first part of the document, just to give you a little bit of geography, the first several pages, all the way through page thirteen, are really the, it's the required management discussion and analysis. This is prepared by management to give some of the highlights, very similar to what was presented here before I am speaking. My part as independent auditor begins on page fifteen, and you'll see there, there's a auditor's report. It's three pages long, but it's a clean report, and it's what's called an unmodified report. It's a clean opinion. And then beginning on page nineteen are the numbers portion of the financial statements. I won't go through those. Those have already been discussed, but I will direct your attention to page twenty-three if you're going along. The next couple of pages there, page twenty-three and twenty-four, are the summarized information of the foundation. The Community College Foundation is a separate entity. We as a CPA firm do a separate audit of that, of the foundation, and there are separate financial statements for the foundation. We're not here to talk about that tonight, but there is some summarized information on these two pages. And we'll, we'll talk about, briefly about the foundation in a footnote here later on. In fact, the footnotes do begin on page twenty-five. The footnotes in note one- The footnotes in note one go on for several pages. These are talking about the accounting policies of the college, and as I mentioned earlier, there are no significant changes to any of the significant accounting policies or practices of the college.
Tom, if I could just interrupt.
Sure.
On page twenty-eight, you'll see about the middle of the page, there's a table, and it kind of shows the different elements of the unrestricted. That last line, when I was making reference to the growth of the general fund surplus of three point four million, you really can see in that last line that last year we had roughly thirty million of unrestricted and unallocated, and now this year it's thirty-three point four million. So that's, that gives the board a sense of the size of the general fund reserve.
Thank you for that clarification. Pages twenty-nine and, and beyond continue to talk about some of the significant balances on the, on the financial statements or significant areas, things like the, the components of investments, or receivables, or property and equipment and debt. Those are the next few pages. There are a lot of footnotes, they're all required, unfortunately. Page forty, though, I would like to direct your attention. At the top of page forty, there's a, a brief description of the technology managed services, which has already been discussed today, and the approximate liability that was accrued of two point three million. There's some commentary on that. And then beginning on, with footnote eight is, is all of the required disclosures related to the pension plan, the MEPSR's pension plan, along with the other post-employment benefits, which is healthcare. All of these disclosures are really background information of the, of the big pension plan and all of the actuarial assumptions. Later on, I'll just show you briefly where it's a little more summarized, you can see some of the high, high-level information. For example, page forty-eight has some of the assumptions from an actuarial perspective. None of this is within control of the college, this is just some of the realities or assumptions that have been made as part of the state's actuarial process. That goes on for quite a while. I would like to move on to page fifty-six, and there's a couple of things that I think are really positive, I just want to point out to the trustees. Footnote ten talks about the foundation and the role that it plays for the college and what you're seeing from a numbers standpoint. And the very last paragraph talks about the college receiving support from the foundation of about one point five million for the fiscal year 2019, which is up from nine hundred thousand in the year prior to really support the success of your students. And then on page fifty-seven, there's, there's another positive thing I wanted to highlight, and that's the impact of the middle college and what it means just from a financial perspective. And I know there's many positive things, but from a financial perspective, you can see at the very, or almost last sentence there, talks about one point six, one point seven million of a financial impact to the college as a result of that program. And then beginning on page fifty-nine, there's even more discussion of the pension plan. This is also required. But page fifty-nine, just, just so you can see on the top line there, is a table, it's a five-year table that just to keep, keep kind of a record. You can see that the college's proportional share of the big pension pie at the state level is, is pretty, pretty even at point four eight percent of the total pie. But you can see that the next line right below, the pie keeps growing from an actuarial perspective and just the realities of that plan. All of that's out of the control of the college, but for informational purposes, obviously there's a big impact on the financial statements of the college. The subsequent pages really talk a little bit more about that, and then there's some additional information that's similar from a other post-employment benefits perspective, the healthcare benefits. That's a kind of a separate pie, but a similar proportion or percentage of the college is bearing on that. And then as you review the financial statements, you might find pages sixty-three, sixty-four, and sixty-five helpful. These are financial statements combining by phone, so if you have a, an interest in perhaps a plant fund, the activity for the year, or a different fund, I'd recommend you maybe there and see how that rolls up. So I've, I've talked about three different documents. Overall, it was a clean audit, and we appreciate the assistance of the college. And at this time, if there's any questions from the trustees, I'd be happy to.
I guess, I don't know if this is for you or Vice President Johnson. So on this MEPSR's cost-sharing multiple employer, or the, I'm looking at this, and why is our proportion of the net pension liability increasing?
Sure, I, I can answer that. There, the method that's used to, to allocate is based, based upon the eligible compensation base of each of the participating employers in, in the plan. And so as a general rule, as you see from the five-year or six-year summary, each and every year, our proportion and share has gone up.
Right.
Because our compensation base, as a percent of all other compensation bases of other employers, has slightly gone up as a percentage. So while our base is state-level and others have had reductions in force, we get a larger share of the pie. And that, within this last year, that was once again a significant reason why our portion of the unfunded liability went up.
Right.
Because the state's total liability is north of twenty-five billion dollars.
So economic hardship in other parts of the state increases our proportion, basically, which increases what we owe into the pension debt. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Revisions to policy two thousand and five, VP Blakey.
Do we need to?
There's a, there's a.
Is it an action?
One says discussion, one says roll call.
This is discussion, I thought.
Well, it also says roll call.
I don't hear that. Oh, on the cap, what he was just talking about.
We have a recommendation that the board receive the fiscal year nineteen audit report as submitted. Is there support?
I don't have that.
Yes.
So moved and supported?
Support it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Roll call.
It's a roll call. Vanessa, thank you.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Yes.
Secretary Devarde?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McNight-Morton?
Yes.
Is this the end of the audit process? Or will we see something else?
Well, we've accepted the report, thank you.
This is the end of the audit process. The, the audit is, is complete, so.
Vice President Blakey, back to you.
No, it's tab F first.
This is discussion.
Capital Outlay Plan?
Yes.
Is this a roll call?
No, this is actually just for, for first, for first reading.
Okay.
It can't be both.
Very good, Capital Outlay Plan, so, um, yeah, sorry.
We have a question.
My, my confusion is here, at the top it says discussion, and in the center it says a roll call vote will be taken. So what is this, a discussion or a roll call?
And this is about the audit, the vote you just took.
On the audit.
It's on the audit. Right, tab E, but I'm just looking at this one.
So generally we put, if it's a discussion or action, we put it out there, and if there's a roll call, in situations where if it is voted on at that time, it's already prepared. But generally discussion's still always safe, whether or not it's a roll call, we have it, and this up here determines how.
So what?
The course of action.
Yes.
Please.
So what you're saying then is that this was a discussion item this evening, and the vote would be taken next month.
Oh, okay.
But we just voted on it, no?
So, but what we just did is vote on it, okay.
Didn't we just vote?
Right.
We just, does it matter?
To make it a vote, it, it won't matter.
It won't matter.
Is there, I mean, if trustee McKnight-Morton would like a month to look at it, I would consider moving, but I don't see any reason that we would vote differently.
I'd vote differently.
Next month?
No, it's just, it was just two different things saying to me.
I think, I think the, the question is, I mean, we can, unless an item requires first and second readings, and there aren't many of those that we have to deal with, any item that's a discussion item can be moved to an action item and voted on if we so choose. Now technically, as Larry properly notes, if we were going to vote on either the capital outlay or on the audit, somebody should move it to an action item, which I can, I think we can probably do retroactively.
Retroactive.
So I would move that the review of the FY two thousand and nineteen audit report be moved to an action item for roll call vote. Is there support?
I second.
There you go. And now let the minutes reflect.
And vote.
All in favor?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
You're opposed?
I'm opposed, I wanted to vote on, on the audit.
You did vote on it.
We are voting on the audit.
Well, then I change my vote. If that's the end, I vote no to receive the audit.
Okay, I don't understand.
I'm confused.
I'm, I'm very confused, because I was voting on a discussion, not on, on receipt, when he says it's over. I decline to accept the audit report.
Okay.
Well, that's all.
You can re-vote then.
Okay.
He just voted.
We just voted.
But let's have it, let's re-vote.
Okay, just asked to call the roll. The, the issue once again is.
Sorry.
That the board rec, received that FY two thousand and nineteen audit report as submitted, which has now been moved to an action item. So say call.
Call the roll, Vanessa.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Yes.
Secretary Devarde?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
No.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McNight-Morton?
Yes.
Good.
So we've accepted the recommendation.
Yes.
Can, can I just say something? I think with these next ones, because of these two things, discussion and a roll call vote, I think it needs to be set out, like trustee set, Landau said, we need to say that out first, so we know.
It's, we can, we, we did this, it's fine.
Right.
The only action item on our agenda for this evening is under tab aye. The rest are all discussion items. Now, we approved the FY nineteen audit, which is fine, because it doesn't matter.
Under new business.
Right.
But what I'm saying is that.
You're saying in the future, the way it should be noted.
In the future, I'm not talking, I'm talking about in the future, so that it is not misconstrued of what's going on here. If we discuss it and we want to vote on it, then it says up to discretion of, if we want to vote on it, like we have done in the past.
Sure, we've done this before.
I mean, we've, we've moved items from discussion to action.
Right, but not the discussion.
Almost every meeting.
I think it should have been done.
That's fine.
That's all I'm saying.
That's fine, I got it.
Okay, thank you.
Moving ahead to new business.
All right.
VP Johnson?
Great, thank, thank you. Under tab F, you have the first reading for the, for the board on the capital out, out the report. Remind the board, this is also a requirement each year, which we have to file by the end of October with the state, a capital out report. We just received, President Blanca just received a letter which defines the elements of the report, doesn't, hasn't changed since last year. The key elements include a summary, a state, a statement of the college's mission, certain data related to the instructional programs of the college, which is in tab C. And tab D is staff and enrollment. Once again, certain elements of our staffing composition and enrollment. Tab E, in response to trustee Davis's earlier question regarding the condition of our facilities, it requires that you provide an assessment of our facility condition from a physical state, and tab E does that for us. Tab F is that once you have that assessment of your, of your facilities, what's your plan? What's your implementation plan to address the deferred maintenance that may be required? And last but not least, if the institution so chooses to propose a capital outlay request for a project, in attachment B, you would outline what that project is. So that, that's the elements of the capital outlay report itself. Couple of highlights for the board as it relates to the capital outlay project request. We have the same project as last year. To remind the board, we're asking the, the state for the renovation of our student center to transform that center into a Center for Success, with all the key elements of student service that we have today, and bring in a lot of additional elements that are housed in other places across campus into the student center buil, building. And as I mentioned earlier, we also would include in that a full sum addressing of the deferred maintenance in that building. So it's, last year, the proposal for that project was just under twenty million dollars, of which two point five million of it was deferred maintenance. This year's recommendation is a cost of twenty-three million, less square footage that we actually would address in the building. Last year, the building, it's about a hundred and fifty, fifty thousand square foot building, and so we were proposing last year that we would need to touch in some way as, as a result of this ren, this renovation, roughly two-thirds last year, or about ninety-seven thousand square feet. We reduced that down to eighty thousand square feet. We carefully went through and thought through exactly where we could place certain activities to try to minimize the amount of square footage that we would actually need to renovate. But with that said, the cost of construction has gone up, and we needed to certainly reflect that from last year to this year. We, we've seen about a fifteen percent increase in construction costs. Along with that, we took a hard look at the deferred maintenance, and mainly our HVAC system, which is in pretty bad shape and needs significant work. So the deferred maintenance element of, of the project went up from two point five million up to six, to six million. So that is the proposed project, the same as last year, but updated numbers for it. The scope is essentially the same in terms of the goal of, of the project for Centers for Success. As, as I mentioned in tab E, facility assessment, we took a real hard look at each and every one of our buildings and each and every build, building system, the electrical system, the plumbing system, the structure, the roofs, and so on. Last year, the calculated replacement cost was about two hundred and fifty-two million for all our, our buildings on campus. We've take, taken a real hard look at it, we've kind of put it to current construction cost, and our new, our new estimated cost to fully replace the buildings is about three hundred and thirty-one million, so a pretty significant increase. And I think it's, it's fair and reflective of current state. But we also then took a hard look at all the deferred maintenance. To trustee Davis's question, took a hard look at year over year, what building systems needed to be addressed. We also brought in a new model. It's called the VFA model, different than the one that Julie mentioned, but it's for, actually for facilities. And it's based upon rigorous industry standards for each of the building systems. And this really was an outgrowth of the campus master plan, you might, might recall, the VP Flowers, as one of the elements hired an outside firm. You might recall the VP Flowers as one of the elements hired an outside firm to come in and do that assessment. We took the results of that assessment. We put that into this new model, the VFA model, which is an industry best practice standard, and that gave us a much more current and accurate reading of the state of our building systems. The good news of all of that is that when you put that all into the models, it basically says that, given the current replacement costs, and given our plans for deferred maintenance addressing, like in this Morris Lawrence building, we have plans to renovate this student center, all the buildings, is that overall, our buildings are in good condition. Now, that's based upon the fact that the college is making an ongoing and strong commitment towards deferred maintenance. If it weren't, then our rating would go down, would go down on a precipitous basis. So we do need to spend money. It's no different than what we've been saying in the past. We've properly reflected that. I will also note for the board that in section D, staff and enrollment, we will not have final numbers for this report till the middle of October. VP Blakey's team is, will get those numbers for us, and in the final version of this report, it'll reflect the fall 19 census data, which we'll put in this report. And that's my summary.
Thank you.
Thank you, I feel better.
Any questions? Trustee DeVary?
I've got a number, actually, and I'm wondering if I might be able to, instead of, I'd like to meet away from here, potentially where we could get a deeper dive into this. But one, just some simple questions. There's an attachment B here at the end, but no attachment A. And I'm assuming the attachment B, it looks like it's something to submit to the state to get them to pay 50 percent of our renovation of the student center?
That is correct.
Okay, but there's no attachment A?
Correct. The attachment B label is actually prescribed by the state. So I honestly don't know what attachment A is, but we've never had an attachment A, so I just am following the state rules.
Okay, okay. I thought I was missing something out of it.
Yeah, no.
So I'm going to take some time to dive deeply into this and have some questions sometime during the month before our next meeting.
This is really interesting reading.
It is.
No, seriously.
Any other questions?
I guess one more question. There's, I'm not seeing in here how we're going to pay for this.
Yeah.
Is that, am I missing it?
It's an attachment.
No, you are not missing it.
So there is a question in attachment B that asks the question, do you have funds to be able to support this project? And so the answer that we have given is, yes, we have enough general fund reserves that if this is what we wanted to use that for, that we do. But I go on to say that we do believe we need to explore other options, which would include potentially long-term debt and other donor support.
Okay, great. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Vice President Blakey, may I come back to you now?
Good evening. Under tab G, you have policy 2005, which is our admissions policy, which was last updated in 2014. As we're moving to improve our online application process, where we'll have a new application where students can actually upload documents very easily, we found that guest students, we actually, the policy actually stated that they had to submit a formal Michigan uniform undergraduate guest application, which is required signature at their home institution. We want to change our process where guest students will be able to basically declare themselves a guest student, and so we needed to come back and ask for that change. And then as we looked at other issues, under international students, all international students are welcome to attend Washington, it's just the F1 students who are coming on an F1 student visa, where we have specific documents that they're needing to submit, and so we updated that area as well.
Yes?
I haven't taken a real close look at this draft and the changes, but I'm wondering if you could call out if there are any changes that we're proposing that will affect the ability of undocumented immigrants to attend classes here?
No.
Anything further? President Johnson, come back to you for flooring replacement.
Great, thank you. We have a proposed contract for the first phase of three phases to replace all the corridor and stairway flooring in the LA building. We anticipate this to be at least a two and potentially three-year project. And so what we'd be doing is doing, this contract is for the flooring, but while we're doing the flooring, we're also going to be painting in the corridors as well. The process would include, during the holiday break, is to do the removal of all the flooring, and this would include, for this particular phase, not only the corridor flooring itself, second floor of LA, but also the bridge that connects the LA to the SC as well. So do that removal during the holiday break, and then during the midnight shifts, then each work night, we then would begin the placement of the new flooring down. And it's just going to take us time to get that done, but we'll do that in a way that does not interrupt any of the classroom activities. We'll do it all during the midnight shift. So we will do the removal of the flooring while the college is closed during break. We'll actually then go back in what's putting called a leveling compound that provides a solid cement base that can be fine to walk on. It won't look great, but it'll be fine to walk on while each and every night, we start to put down the new flooring. And that's true both for the corridor and then for the SC bridge. We then would go on in future phases to do floors one and three and the stairwells.
Thank you. Any questions? Trustee Hatcher?
Not that we have a choice, but is it more expensive to do it at night?
It is, it is more, it is more expensive to do at night, but I couldn't figure out how to do it.
No, I'm just saying, we don't have a choice. I just wondered if that's right.
It is. Slightly, slightly more expensive. And as a result, that's why although we had solicited from four vendors, we only got one bid, because we had a hard time finding a vendor. This is a complex project that would do it at night.
Trustee DeVary?
What's the floor material going to be?
It's a rubber floor material. Just think of tiles that are, it's great. It's going to look great.
So are they actually tiles that they're putting in, or is it something that they pour in?
Flooring, flooring, yeah. They're laying it down in sheets. Yeah, and it's, it's non, it uses non-adhesive glue, so it doesn't use any glues. It's a self-sticking material. That's done. It's really a great product. It's been well-proven in the industry.
The WCC logo is right on each tile?
It is not, but you know.
That's my money. Just thought I'd ask.
Take a motion, though, Russ. Any other questions? We're tab I, we have an action item resolution regarding SB 0134 of 2019. The recommendation is that the Washington College Board of Trustees certifies that the college does meet the local strategic value best practice standards required for state appropriations under Michigan Senate Bill 0134 of 2019.
I'd move this.
We have movement support. Is there any discussion?
If Dr. Julie Morrison did it, then I could vote yes.
Sounds like good standing. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Is it a roll call?
It's a roll call.
Nope. Please call the roll, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Treasurer Davis? Yes.
Secretary DeVary?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Do I need to sign this so we can submit?
We have a motion to adjourn. Is there support?
Support.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.